And good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to today's workshop. We're covering capital projects today. Boyd?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, Minister, Commissioner, Commission. We've got the department heads that are requesting projects from the Capital Improvement Fund. I'll remind everyone that we didn't add a lot of projects because we have so many. So, we can go as quickly as you'd like because there's very few new ones, or we can go through the whole thing. Whatever, you know, we were scheduled for a couple of hours. These are important topics, and so you'll take as much time as you want. Before I move forward, I want to tell you and announce, I hope I can announce it, Liz. Liz has been selected today to be inducted into the Women's Hall of Fame for Texas.
Does that mean she's too big for us now and going to leave us?
Well, I'll tell you in executive session. That's a joke, Liz. That's a joke, Liz. So, I'm really, really proud of her. I mean, that is amazing. That is a huge, huge deal. They're inducting eight women this year, and she's one of them. And I'd like to ask that you allow me to accompany her on November the 9th. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
Who does home runs, Seena?
No home runs. Grand slam.
Okay. There was one yesterday by Tucker. Okay, we're going to start with which one?
You want to start with the CIP?
So, you've got a book today of what we're going to go over, capital projects. We will start with the CIP. And so, again, we can go through them quickly, but I'm going to have the department heads go through them and just remind you, again, most of them are either ongoing already, or they're in the planning stage. And then, we'll highlight the ones that are new. Go ahead.
So, the first one to this falls under engineering at Seventeenth and a Half of Twenty-Ninth Wer Road. This is a continuation of the partnership we have with the county. That's our estimate for right-of-way. We've already contributed for the design and preliminary of engineering on that. The next two projects, we already had Thirty-third Street funded. Part of that is for design, and the additional five hundred, half a million dollars is for right-of-way acquisition.
And then, what we hope to do is finish the design, secure the right-of-way this coming year, and then fund the construction the following year.
What's that one, Sard, because I know that's like a five million dollar project, right? How long will that one take? How many years?
Probably a year.
Right here.
Go ahead.
The next project is the asphalt crack ceiling. It's a program we've been putting in place. We do it through the capital improvement program.
Benny? Keep those down.
We're in a sort of parking lot.
Sort of parking lot, is that's a reoccurring? This year, we did about fifteen, sixteen projects from that one. I believe we got an increase that was during that one, so that was, thank you guys for that.
Number six is fiber. That is our ongoing fiber projects, whether it's the new construction, the new compost, could be widening like a Taylor Road, five mile line between Benson and Ware, the fire training center, the brand-new fire station up at Tres Lagos. So, we also use some of that money to maintain our equipment, service our equipment, our trailers, so.
The next project is the City Hall front canopy upgrade. This is where we're putting the security measures at City Hall. We anticipate a little bit to be rolled over. Some of the storefront materials is delayed, but it shouldn't be much longer to finish that project. The next project is the downtown improvements. This is a reoccurring budget that we do cleanup, or we, there are several items we've identified. One of them was to put ballards, and we have part of the ground at Seventeenth and Austin. The only thing is that project, we have an estimate out at one hundred and ninety-one thousand. So, that would be a project we couldn't do to do automatic pneumatic ballards. We'll have to look at the other programs, but something to consider. The next project is an engineering storage building that had been previously approved by commission, and it's just an ongoing project. We partnered with Public Works. They're doing, we're doing two storages. They're paying theirs out of their capital budget.
Number ten's a replacement fire truck for station number seven located at Auburn and Benson Road, and it's just a shortage for that up road.
Number eleven is FM twenty-two twenty, or Wer Road from one East Third to one oh seven. We had previously taken a workshop item where Techside, this is for the landscape medium, and so we just have it in the budget for next year as we discussed during the year.
Number twelve is the hiking bike prolemendies there on Second Street, District Six. Part of that project is, they're doing pavers out there now. Chase trucks have been ordered. Landscaping and irrigation is what you see that's left on this account, which will have to come during the fall season. It's too hot right now to get that going. Thirteen is protocol improvements, and that's a reoccurring account. That's there every year.
Do we need to add anything to it? Do we have, do we use it all?
We do use it all. Most of that's just landscaping upgrades.
Yeah, beautification, that's what it is.
We should be good on that.
The next item is loop cutting projects by Corinor Marlin and her staff. Y'all have approved the bond, or the citizens approved the bond. This is just an ongoing capital project that keeps, we have to keep those loops up, and they continue to cut about one hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth. That makes sure that the sensors are all working at intersections, and you get the most reliable network, and so that's just that item.
Once again, Twenty-third and Auburn. That one, you can be there forever. Going east.
Oh, yeah. The Dollar General.
Yeah. But the other side.
Yeah.
Not on the other side. It is like. The Morris.
It's cool, right?
That's the hiking bike, that's, oh, yeah, sorry. The Morris Hiking Bike Trail will be, we've, we have funds through the MPO on this. We're currently going out for state letter of authority so we can bid that. We think bidding will happen in November, once we get that letter this month. And so, we've been, this is one of the projects we've been tracking very closely as funds would expire from the MPO this month, but all we need is that letter, and that letter has been submitted by Techside, and we've been in close communication with Pete and his staff.
So, did it November, is that what you said?
We're looking at a November letting if we can get the letter this month.
Is this our portion of it, or?
That's our estimate right now on the, our portion along with Edinburgh. We have to go back to Edinburgh and ask them for their portion on construction, but we haven't, we haven't had a local agreement yet.
But the million eight hundred and fifty-six is what we expect out of our budget to use.
Yes, sir.
And then, there'll be more from Edinburgh and more from state.
We have to fund it wholly, so it'll come in, we're hoping it comes in around one point eight, and then whatever they bring in would be a revenue for managing. So, we're hoping the project will be at one point eight wholly.
Okay, so we're going to get some reimbursements back.
Shall we? Yes, sir.
Okay, number sixteen is the Morris Park, Phase Two and Three. That's the park that we broke ground a couple of months ago. Construction companies out there, they straightened the trail on the top already. They've been working on the restroom on the southeast corner, so that one is moving pretty good.
There is a lot of movement.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we just met with MISD after yesterday to do some safety fencing there before school starts, and to relocate a silk fencing, so that way they have access to this laptop, basketball laptop there at Morris. So, working with MISD, keep them updated on the progress.
Roadway safety improvement is a reoccurring item. Michelle's brought up one that is a potential project at McColl and Violet. There's no left turn bay when you're heading in the eastbound, westbound direction. Those are the type of projects that we look at with these funds. We had done Tenth and Freddy previously, so that's just a reoccurring item that we put on, and we always find the project for.
Number seventeen, sorry, pavement markings that, just what is that?
So, we had, through our survey, we had gotten that our markings out throughout the city were not to the, to park, and so we were using that money to go through and make sure that we're striping all our roads and keeping that up.
And what about curves? Because I get a lot of complaints, especially, I think it's Violet and Sixth Street, where it has a little dividers. If it's raining a little bit, if it's dark, a lot of times you can't see them, and you see a lot of hits.
If we, if we get those requests, we typically try not distracting because that becomes a reoccurring maintenance.
Or what about little reflectors in the, or something? I don't know. But we get complaints, at least I do, especially that.
That's definitely something we can look at. We look at them and spot treatments, we'll take a look at that for you.
I mean, that was, that was used, that raised medium there was used in an attempt years ago, when there's a light, put a light there, then the light went out, then a four-way, then whatever back, and that's been tried to, to get it better. And that raised medium was put at that point sometime ten to fifteen years ago, okay?
Not less.
Okay, so then, what, what is the purpose today of?
So, kind of going back in history, at one point, Sixth and Violet dead-ended at one point. And so, then, as that road got punched through, we have some kind of condos or garden homes up front of it, and so we get a lot of complaints to the traffic department that they're speeding. And so, we've done different measures to try to slow down traffic. One, like you said, we had a four-way stop that warranted, then a signal warranted. Traffic is, patterns continue to change. I think we're back to a four-way stop. But those, those islands were meant to choke traffic down, make drivers feel a little more uneasy to slow down. It slows traffic down about three to four miles an hour. You know, when we, at the time we had done it, speeds did reduce that. Complaints kind of have dropped off, and so we think they're still doing their job. It's just, it does make the intersection tighter, and they do run over, and we can look at trying to highlight that and put some safety, additional safety features.
I live it every day.
Yes, sir.
I'm just seeing it, but I don't know what the answer, nobody knows what the answer is for that intersection, okay? It's a tough intersection, and it, you know, but let's work out, let's look at it again.
Leave him in there. It's a safety thing. You have a lot of pedestrian traffic, it's a very heavily traveled street intersection.
That's what I'm saying, we're going to look at it again. It looks.
We can do that. The next item is the stadium parking. This has been a plug number, or not a plug number, but we were resurfacing part of the parking lot as part of an agreement. They've been building the.
Press block.
Press blocks. They still have equipment there that we don't, we don't want to pave until they move that heavy equipment so they don't damage that. We do, we do make use of that parking lot during the parade, and so we want to make sure when we're putting the investments that it's done right, and so that's what that number is. Taylor Road, that's the design number for Taylor from two to four.
Number twenty?
Twenty. Oh, sorry, guys.
Yeah.
Uh, streetlights.
Very important.
That's a number we have, that we're going through and putting additional streetlights in the city. We have done several Friday highlights, showing how we've come up with that, and we've been putting in the request AEP to start that.
Do the majority in the south, or?
No, we, so, they kind of spread between the south, central district, and northwest. They, as we get north, where the newer subdivisions, the spacing is a lot better, but there, there are still some areas that need.
I know there's one on Wer Road that's totally dark, like bad.
No, there's a bunch of.
Let's see, but in the south is, I think it's still.
We had come in at District Four, and we had done a big campaign to upgrade those, and we do, we still do have some, but a lot of District Four have been completed. A lot of where the central area of town, the core, is where we have more of the need or the spacing does not quite meet our criteria, and that's where most of that is targeted.
So, I remember correctly, southeast was the one with the, with the most need on, on.
How many? We can get that report back out. Off the top of my head, I don't know the numbers per se, but we do have that information in the grade.
You estimated loss per light?
If you're putting new installs, it's about twelve hundred to twenty-two hundred a light for a new installation. Sometimes there is additional electrical, when they do the, they send us their invoice. It could get more expensive, but roughly it's about twelve hundred to twenty-two hundred a light.
But it's pretty much done by AEP, we just pay.
AEP or Magic Bad would be the provider.
So, question, on those, like I said, there's an existing one there. Can we change it into LEDs, or no, we can't change it into it? Because I know there's some, the Velasquez, you can't do it, but I don't know, like those?
You can, there's a cost. What they, what they do is they'll put in an equivalent, so you're, you'll get the same light, so if there's a two hundred and fifty watt light, they have a two hundred and fifty watt equivalent for that light on an LED. It's a, it's a different color, it's probably a little wider light, gives you the perception that it's a little brighter, but it's basically the same lighting.
Yeah, I have a lot, I mean, there's a lot on the streets that are really dull. I mean, just that, that yellow dull.
Yeah, it's a different gas that's in there, gives a yellow light. Subdivision paving is a, a number, when we work with developers, if there's any oversizing or any extensions of roads where it just makes sense for us to finish a road off or to oversize drainage, we use that number to do that. Last year, we did part of Freddy to extend that and build it to its full right-of-way with a developer. It came in handy, and that's another, that's what that number is. Taylor from two to four is, had already previously been awarded through commission or approved budget-wise, and that's just a rollover number. The traffic building renovation, that currently is out to bids right now, and we'll be getting bids back. Traffic operations equipment, that's for the generator.
Where is the traffic building?
The traffic building will be at Aquarian Bicentennial. It's a property that was purchased.
Oh, is that the old, yes. So, that's, that's what's going to be there, okay.
The, the equipment is the generator for that building. Traffic sign upgrades, this is a number where Marlin uses that to upgrade signs throughout the city, which is just an ongoing project. Vision Zero is a study that we're conducting that will have us adopt a policy, but we're looking to qualify, or we're saying that we're going to reach a goal of zero accidents. It's a key component to getting safety grants, to have one of those adopted in your city. Most cities have one adopted, so in addition of having it, it'll help us to seek safety grants out there.
West Side Park improvements, I think the last piece of that is, is the playground, which will start being installed next week, so the crew's out there right now prepping that first playground there by Pavilion One, so we're going to get a replacement next week.
What about canopies? Because we just had the softball World Series, and it was incredible. We had great reviews, great comments, except for there, there was no shade at, at West Side.
So, we currently don't have any shade structures at West Side. We can take a look like we did this past year at the softball complex, adding that seating area with the shade, so that's something that we could look at coming up into this project. This way.
I think we need to, because I think it's a good part, it just has absolutely no shading, and it's too broad. Okay, we want to jump to the infrastructure improvements, and if we have time, we can come back to the development corporation, but I'd like to get it out. You all got it? Starting with alleys?
Alleys, we, we have.
Where are we? Excuse me? It's the third cap.
Phase thirteen.
Infrastructure and Improvement Fund.
Okay. So, alleys is, this is a number that was put in by commission for new alleys, so alleys that currently are not paved, that would need paving, so you either have a Caliche or a third alley, and those are the ones that we looked at. We have two engineers that are currently designing. We're hoping that sometime mid-year, we'll be able to release the first package, and then shortly after that, release the second package, so we can work on expanding those three million dollars. The next project is a Baboa lift station. This is funded in two categories, but it's, it's a project in the south for the Baboa stormwater pump. The title is the Baboa Water Pump Station, and total of that project is about two million dollars when you combine both accounts.
The campground project at Kepler, we are currently getting a survey of the property. We have made some clearings on the archery area, the campground site area, working with engineering to get a survey out there for the campground, so that one is currently moving. I think, I believe we are at ninety percent design completion. I think once we get the information that the architect firm is needing with those surveys, we will have that a hundred percent completion, and then we can move forward with that project.
Why not putting that on a workshop so they can see the progress and see the results? What's that, as far as like the bike, we know how long it will be?
I can get that for you. What we're planning to do is, is on that south side, is doing that off-road biking, which we're working with an organization from, from Harton, and then on that north side, looking to come back and see if we can't do an asphalt trail for dirt bikes as well, and then for, for street bikes on that north side of the, of the project, so. I'll show you the concept, we can bring that to workshop, and I can show you that concept. It's pretty big in the bigger cities, to where you can bring the dirt bikes and the road bikes onto that trail as well.
And then, do we still have to make the decision on how we're going to run the campgrounds, like?
Yes, sir.
Day, night? We've got to bring that back in?
Yes, the logistics and operations programming, we still need to bring that back to show you guys what it's going to look like once it's developed.
Museum at IMAS, well, that's a, that's a number that you approved for the children's museum. They're still doing planning and design. Hopefully, they'll start construction next year, but I doubt it. So, we did have an amendment to their contract that allows them to spend a little bit of money on design and planning, twenty thousand dollars, and that, that'll probably be spent eventually, otherwise, that's what it's going to be.
The energy efficiency program, this was a, Snyder had done a study, we decided to take on that project ourselves. All the projects have been awarded. They're, they're basically upgrading ACs or changing out ACs to more economical ACs, and so all the projects have been awarded. The, the issue or the thing with this one is that it's long eight times on mechanical equipment right now, and that's the only reason this is rolling over. If not, it would like to have been completed, it would have been normal circumstances.
Are we changing out any HVACs?
As part of this, yes. The PD is our biggest, the, the biggest project that's left on this.
For whatever reason, what sticks in my mind is, is how they use the chiller, the variable, and the, there were two types of ways.
A variable, a variable speed.
That's right, variable speed, and then with another one.
I forget the other one, but I know the variable speeds, so what that would do is, at times, it'll run at a lower gear when, to run more efficiently.
Right, like when nobody's occupying the building.
It'll, it'll run at a lower speed.
Right.
And so, that should give us the energy savings that, that's what Snyder had recommended we.
And that's the only facility in the whole city that was recommending HVAC?
No, we've done City Hall.
Oh, I see.
We've done PD, we've done Ambien, we've done.
Oh, Lark, too?
Las Palmas.
How large?
I don't think Lark was part of it. We did one, one component, the library, we still have the bus, and then we're doing the convention center. Not all the ACs, but there were some ACs that they had identified.
Okay.
And that's a, I'm glad you brought that up, because in the study, not all HVAC systems were identified as needing replacement, and we're having to replace some of the ones that were not identified. In fact, some of them are on the agenda on Monday.
Sure.
So, there's, there's more than we thought.
Okay, thank you.
The engineering drainage studies, it's a master study that they've done, some, an area in the north and one area in the south. We're almost through that study. Hopefully, in the next two, two and a half months, we'll have that wrapped up, and so that's a rollover.
Here, P, here, P, we're underway. We're, phase one is to go live with our financial procurement, fixed assets for November first. Phase two is our HR payroll budget going January, and then phase three and four is our permitting, our utility billing, so it's one in a way. Our first phase is targeted for November first.
Number eight is Fire Station Number Eight, which is over at Tres Lagos. This is just a rollover for the continuation of that project. Number nine is Fire Fighter Training Facility Center. This is also a rollover for that project, and with that one, they already have the steel going up on that project, so we can start seeing the building take shape.
Number ten, Irrigation District Road. This is the, the trail that we presented in workshop, looking at extending the Benson Hiking Bike Trail. So, we're looking to go from Three Mile to Garcia Park, so they can have access to Garcia Park, and then from the Vine Node off of Benson, south of, a little bit south of Nicky Road, looking to see if we can expand there on the drainage to Pecan, then from Pecan down to Business Avenue. So, getting with engineering and looking at their master plan on what, on what we want to do to connect McCallan Nature Center area, West Side Park, all the way up to Three Mile, so we're taking a look at that. We actually have a meeting with the county tomorrow with the drainage to see if that's a possibility, and then meeting with Irrigation District to see if, because of that, the sharing of that, of that property there. So, that one's in, in those plans, again, working with engineering, based off of their master plan with the, the bridge underneath Wer Road to connect West Side Park, Nature Center, and then hopefully future, looking down to connect all the way down to Military or Sarah Avenue on the south side.
Doesn't the Benson Hiking Bike end at Garcia Park, like right in the middle?
Correct, yes, so it, yeah, so on the south side of Garcia Park, it just stops there. It can get you into Garcia Park, but we would like to expand it to Three Mile.
Oh, one more.
Looking at engineering, looking to maybe extend that all the way to Tres Lagos for future development.
I see.
For that trail. That trail will eventually get us down, if we continue to progress towards south on Wer Road, hopefully get us down to that county trail, plug into the county.
The what?
The county trail that the county's working on.
Real quick, and station number eight, what's the completion date on it?
Uh, next fall.
Next fall, right? The amount looked low, but it looks like you have most of it crammed into this fiscal year.
Yeah, so whatever we don't use, we'll move the rest over.
Okay, so you have projected all of it from this year already?
Well, you could, I mean, you're still guessing. We won't finish by September the 30th, so we just put some money in next year to identify it. We've got, it's, it's five point five million, so.
Yeah, I just figured most of it would have been on next year.
Yeah, we'll just move the whole thing, whatever we need.
We'll be sending the, the new, the splash, New Perks Rec Air South and Expressway, this is the, where we allocated for the RDF there on Rontro Road, so again, working with engineering just to see how we could utilize that top portion to get a, I don't know what you call it, Davenport Park, Regional Park for District Six, so in the plannings of just waiting for a concept of how we're going to design that top portion for that part there.
That's a rental one?
Yes, sir. Still also waiting response back from the county, see if there's any partnership there as well. Splash grounds at City Parks, uh, this is where we allocated, uh-
By the way, yeah, and Rancho, I, I spoke to Commissioner Cantus because he's willing to participate, so-
We would like to-
Yes, so let's check, let's check on what is the capacity that they wanna do.
Yes, sir.
But he took, good, the, the thing is, my conversation with him was that he was gonna go ahead and, and, and help us with Curtis. And then we switched when we, uh, decided to put the splash back at Curtis Park. He's gonna help us move in the fence and give us more parking. And I think the lease, it was gonna be a lease, it was, it was, uh, approved yesterday.
Correct. And so there, we're currently working, I talked about Mondo today, we're currently working on that inter-local agreement. Getting a new inter-local agreement, uh, with them. Um, so I sent that over for their review. They'll send it back with, with changes and updates.
So instead of helping us with Curtis, he's gonna be helping us with Rancho. Monitor.
Okay.
He's gonna help us with-
Got it. Okay.
Just send him a copy.
Yeah.
Splash grounds at, uh, City Parks, um, first park, we're gonna open up, uh, next Friday is the McAllen youth baseball complex splash path. Um, and then again, waiting on that inter-local agreement with the county to, uh, install it there at Curtis Park.
Does, does it interlocal them, or?
We did, or I, we did, uh, and sent that over for their review. And then we'll, we'll have Ike sign off on it here-
Thank you.
With CM's approval.
Thank you, guys.
So that one is moving along after, after their purchase with, uh, McAllen third.
Number thirteen is streetlight upgrades. This is, uh, one of our land's projects, which is upgrading streetlights, McAllen complements, the other project we talked about.
Tennis center. So needing direction on moving forward, and I know we presented this at workshop, we presented-
Just tell me what it is.
Okay.
You don't need directions today.
Uh? What was that?
So, so, you know, looking at the tennis center, looking at, uh, five or six acres, which is needed to, to build this, uh, facility on, uh, which is the same surrounding of what other cities have, with their own tennis center. Based off of engineering and their plans, um, tennis center's coming in at four point three mil. So looking back, and do we do ten courts and six pickleball? You know, we've had a big, big push for pickleball, and we'll look at that at the, the master plan survey that will be presented, um, in September in, in, in workshop or in commission. Or we take a, we look at this, the aquatics, uh, tennis center complex.
It's still, it's still matter of finding a location, right? I mean, that's-
Correct, for both.
For both.
Either one, either or, correct.
Yeah. I still think it's ideal to develop a multi-use site, only because you have kind of shared resources right on one.
So we're currently looking for a property for that, twenty acres? Twenty, twenty-five acres? Um, and something like that, based off of engineering's, uh, cost estimation. We're looking probably close to about thirty mil for the aquatic center tennis complex. Right, which will include a dog park, uh, Olympic sized pool for competition, uh, multi-purpose turf field, uh, a trail, sixteen, uh, court, tennis court, six pickleball courts. So yes, pretty massive, uh, property that we're gonna need.
Find the land first and then-
Correct, to, to host, you know, five hundred parking spots, uh, because it's gonna be a very heavily used facility.
I think if we can find land that's ideal for the various projects, maybe a different size. If it's a good piece of land and it's eight acres, then we figure out what fits on there, right? And what we wanna prioritize. If it's twelve acres or eighteen acres-
So I know Mayor mentioned prior that could we look at breaking it up?
Different options.
Right.
Yeah, different options, why, I think it's based on what you can find as far as sites.
If you look at baseball, look at, uh, the, the, the baseball fields, it is super packed. And that's the reason to me, it's kinda big, break it up. But if we have different options, or if we find a big enough space, we can do everything. So, it depends.
Are we planning to do anything with the, uh, Three Mile, Twenty Ninth Street, parks there, the turf and all that, the grass?
Buddy Owens and-
Of course, Mark.
Right now, we are not. I did back a couple of months ago, when, when the community was asking to take a look at what it was, what it would be. So I got with Helles, uh, we're looking at doing the entire north-south. Five fields on the north side, because those four fields are RDF on the northeast side. Keeping that all natural, redoing that, re-scraping it to get the, the topsoil back on. And then, sixteen turf fields, four of those being multi-purpose soccer football. You're looking at those two about fourteen million dollars to do the whole entire complex. Again, you can go and break that up, uh, two fields here. What we've seen at other cities that have turf and natural fields, it is, let's say, for instance, they have eight fields. Four of that would be synthetic turf, four of that will be natural turf.
Well, I mean, we've gotta do something, because the existing turf are, is a problem. That's what I hear. I am no expert at it. What I want is, is direction from, from staff to say, what can happen? And what should happen? I mean, a gradual thing, we could-
Right.
Doesn't mean that all of it, and you really can't afford to do it all at one time, because then you're taking away the use of all the fields-
Correct.
At one time. So what, what, what is the plan to try to remedy if there is a need for a remedy?
We would probably take a look at doing them in phases.
Is there a need for a remedy or not? That's what I want to know first.
Is there a need for what?
A remedy. Is there a problem with the, with the field and the turf? That's what I hear.
Are we talking about soccer?
Correct. There at McAllen sports park, Deleon South.
Well, no, it's not only soccer, where they play-
Well, we, we got type of football-
Yeah.
Multi-purpose fields on there. Personally, for me, I don't, I don't think there is, uh, again, I haven't heard anything other than a couple of months ago, uh, when they came to talk to us about it. You know, as, as long as we have the proper amount of time for field maintenance on those fields, they should be playable. Currently, right now, with associations on our fields, you're looking at thirty weeks of continuous usage, Monday through Sunday. Out of fifty-two weeks a year, I mean, I'm only getting so many per season, after each season, to maintain all that, all that property. When we were out at Games of Tex, I mean, I'm sorry, uh, the TAF Regional at, at Memorial, Matt High Stadium, just to remind you, when we were on the field, uh, about four o'clock, the temperature reading on that field was a hundred and seventy degrees on synthetic turf.
Yeah, hot.
So it is extremely hot, right? But, you know, if, if the, the commission wishes to see, you know, two fields, I mean, I can get to the quote, we can, we can look at and working at that. But for me, you know, I, I'm natural grass, I mean, it's-
No, I, I, we're talking, you know,
Now, the one at Hellfong is, is pretty popular.
Natural, but they're saying that the natural turf is just all beat up, and it's just not, and hasn't been, this is for years. That, this, this complaint is, is not a new-
As long as you stay on top of our irrigation system there, um, and we have the proper amount of time to get the maintenance done. But again, if, if the direction is to utilize those fields forty-two weeks out of the year, fifty, then we would have to probably take a look at another option. But again, synthetic turf is that same. You got pros and cons. Just because we have the turf there, doesn't mean we can utilize it twenty-four seven, seven days a week. But again, there would be other maintenance concerns you would have to deal with with the turf field, synthetic turf as well.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm back, I'm back to this thing, okay? I'm back to, okay, the golf course.
Yes, sir.
It could be used and torn up, you know, because the demand is there. And what have we done, uh, to, uh, to remedy that? Now I'm looking at you, Katlas. We've, we've cut down some of the use, right? Because we can't take as much, they can't take the beating, right? Well, this is similar. It can't, you're saying it can't take the beating?
Correct.
The gra, you know, whatever.
Correct.
So what is the, what could be a plan that, hey, instead of thirty, thirty weeks, it could be different?
So we've done that-
I don't know what the plan is.
We've done that in the past, uh, with these associations and organizations. Remember, we worked with fourteen to fifteen different organizations that utilize our fields and provide that service for us. And we've come back and said, hey, you know what? We're gonna have to reduce your season.
Yeah.
Oof, backlash there, because-
You need, you need more fields.
Right.
Yep.
So green space, and, and, and we're, we're looking at that, right? We're getting, Yovalde is about to come up, which is three full-size soccer fields on the south end with lights, which can be multi-purpose fields. That one should be almost finishing up here. Spring Fest, we just added lights to Spring Fest, which is six more soccer fields, or multi-purpose fields. So just looking at that, as, as Roy mentioned, looking for more, more green space, um, for that.
You know what, and, and that's one of the things that I've seen lately, is that, yes, we need more green spaces, but it's more of that kind of thing, fields. So I see a lot of, a lot of hour parks being, being underutilized. People don't go out a lot, but fields, baseball, soccer, football, there.
So Morris, 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 Morris-
Yes.
With that-
Still, still catches green space.
Right, and we still have all those RDFs up there-
Right.
Uh, at, at Morris as well, that we can utilize on the side and, and south water.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm talking about. I'm talking about, uh, believe me, the heat, and it's not only this year's heat, which has been really, really bad. But, you know, we, we're gonna be hot. And, and synthetic turfs are very hard, are very hot and very hard to use, you know, during the day. I realize that. So that might not be the option. But, you know, like, there has to be a more, more, more turf, which is more maintenance and more money.
Correct.
And that's what, you know, people need to understand, that, you know, creating and finding twenty acres and making it, making it as fields is just the start of all of the cost of maintenance and operation for everything else. And to provide a good turf, which-
So we're looking, and we continue to try to find ways to, to get those fields in the best shape we can for these associations, because we want to provide them that experience of going out on our fields. But it's, 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 it's a juggle of, you know what, we're gonna give you this service, but then, you know what, the fields are gonna take a beating more. We maintain our fields and the service is not being provided to the community. So- Yes, sir.
Okay, um, the next one is, uh, traffic and drainage bond. Well, let me, let me back up. You can go ahead and go there. So just to summarize, on the, uh, infrastructure and improvement fund, that's about almost twenty-three million dollars of projects. And the one before that on CIP is twelve point eight million dollars. So on the next one, on traffic and drainage, what you're gonna see is that we've got a fund balance there, which tells you that we're getting close to finishing the bond projects. So once we feel confident that, that we funded these projects adequately, we can use this money elsewhere, as long as it's traffic and, uh, drainage. And so you're gonna have a surplus of money that we'll be able to use, maybe even as, as soon as mid-year, transfer it over to drainage projects.
Good.
Go ahead.
Uh, all, all these projects, um, are either in design or in construction. Second and Byron Nelson, uh, we currently have that out to bid. Uh, we had a rebid, contractor, we had bid that one time, contractor went to funk. And so we're re-getting that back on.
What is the improvement of that?
Uh, we're running a drain line down, uh, Second and near Byron Nelson, we're coming down on alley, uh, on that project. And so it'll kind of put relief south of where Miss Pusson. As well discussed, it's a little further south, closer to Second and Byron Nelson.
Yes, that, that section floods and Wichita, which is like one block to the north.
From, from what intersection?
No, it's, it's like a couple of more blocks to the north. Wichita, Wichita and Second?
It's further, a little further south.
It's right next to it, yeah.
I'm trying to, Byron Nelson, if you go to the north, Second, Wichita is there. And it floods a lot, and it floods to the, to, to the, but that, that it covers the two lanes that goes north, north to south. So people have to drive in the middle.
Driving in the center, they've always, that's been the one for years.
I know, but we need to improve that, because my concern is ambulances go through there to go to the hospitals. We have three hospitals, four hospitals, right, right there in the city. So we, we need those.
That's the project we sent through the Friday highlight, that staff will be looking at and looking at design this year. And then seeking, uh, a construction project the following year. So yes, we, we addressed, or we looked at Miss Presquels, but that's a little further north than this project, this one's south.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
The next one's, uh, Burns Drive, it's a small drainage improvement, uh, in the area.
That's at the end? At the other bridge?
Uh, yes.
Between Sandy and Kent.
Oh, yeah, before getting to the Orangewood Gates. Yeah.
To the end. The other one is Coriairo subdivision. This one actually got funded through CDVG. It's a project that we're looking at to survey, um, but it had, had been identified through the, the drainage project. What is CDVG eligible? Gray subdivision, uh, it's a drainage outfall improvement. Houston Avenue and Second, this one's under design. Then we have Main and Jay, that's a fairly big project. We have the, we're reviewing the ninety-five percent set of plans at this time. Hopefully, within a month or two, we'll have that one ready. After comments, button them up, we can get that one out as well. The MS four, uh, stormwater quality monitoring program, that was to buy, uh, rain gates, that will report to us back through the internet. We have that purchased, there's just a rollover, some of the equipment hasn't come in.
What is it, report? I'm sorry.
Uh, basically, it's to get the level of, of the ditch. And so we're buying one, we're gonna test it out, uh, put it in a location-
What are they, like, little IoT devices, or what is it?
What happened? It's kind of like the SCADA. Like, uh, MPU has it to report back on the stations, but this would report back the water level of the ditch, how much rainfall is out at that area. So it's, instead of, right now, what we do is we send inspectors out to go get all the levels of the ditches.
Oh.
And then they record the time, and so we kind of take that back when we're doing studies. This would be a permanent, uh, installation.
So this would, would, this would cover how many outfalls?
This will only cover one.
Just one?
Yes. Prices went up dramatically, uh, on the-
Is that beneficial to just cover one?
Well, I think if it's successful, then we'll come back and, and request additional ones. We wanna see how this one works out, and then we would come back. We don't, I don't think we would need that many, maybe five to six within the city. But we'd like to get a proof of concept, and then come back to you for additional-
That's a good idea.
Are those the ones that just mission just installed? I'm not, I'm not aware of, uh, mission.
They put them in the middle of the canal, and it's gonna tell them, uh, the level of the water and how much is coming?
Is it a static? I don't know if theirs is just, because you just put a static rain gate or a level?
This was a, a, one was numbered, but it was like aluminum, but, and they were putting them in the middle of the, the drainage.
So that one is still for them to drive out there, they would read it? And this one will give us feedback through the internet?
Oh, that's at the main's internet, because it has like a little, uh, sun, uh, solar panel.
I, I'm not aware, but it, it may be similar.
I just saw it in the news yesterday.
Yeah, another complexity of this system, but I don't know, Robert, isn't there IoT devices that very low cost could measure, I think, uh, what do you call it?
I, I haven't, I haven't-
Levels of water, or-
Yeah.
They use them in grain silos and stuff, right? To measure, uh, volumes and things like that?
So one of the things we're, we're doing is, we're trying to get the same similar system as the county. So we'd like to be tied in with, uh, Raoul, or District One Drainage District, so that we provide them feedback.
So the county has this?
Well, yes. They have it in a limited basis, and so that's what we, that's the product we're currently looking at as well.
Yeah, I, I haven't really looked too much into it. You're right, there's probably PLCs like our SCADA very summer. Keep in mind, I don't know if this first- Keep in mind, I don't know if this first one includes the initial capital outlay to buy the software that goes with it, and that might be why it might be higher. Uh, you know, a little sticker shot, but there are several sensors we can look at, I just don't know, like he said, Eduardo said, if we're trying to share with the county and have the same system, I, I have not looked.
And you know what, well, I think it was the counties, but they were putting it on Mission, but it was a county, not Mission. The county was putting...
The county is putting some out, and they're the ones that we wanna, and we wanna match their...
So the county has proof of concept, it doesn't work?
Yes, the only thing right now is, we would, at some point, we'd come back for, uh, the mon- not the mon, but, uh, a license, so we could piggyback off their license versus Byron.
Oh, so.
Uh, yeah. So we've been talking with the Drainage District. Uh, the next project is Eleventh and Shasta, is a drainage project at that intersection, provide localized relief. Forty-first and Naffedill, as part of, uh, public comment, there's an area where there's localized flooding or water ponding, this would take care of that. Uh, Fourth and Tulip, same item, it's localized, uh, flooding. North Gate Drainage Improvement, that one is currently under construction right now. Um, that's, that's a fairly big project, it is, I think it's grant-funded, so we won't be getting, uh, reimbursement through that as well. And then we have the Northwest...
Is this, is this, uh, getting, uh, close to Second Street, or is it, uh, uh, Tenth Street and, and west?
So this is off the second, so from the ditch on Second, those doors are currently going.
Yeah.
So we're currently under construction on this project.
Yeah, I'm, we get a lot of calls on that one. So we're spending around a million two there, and it will improve the drainage and all that.
Yes, uh, right now, they, they, they lack drains in the structure, so we would be extending drains to those areas.
An approximate finish is four months?
It's a year, we're, uh, let's see, we've got seven to send down, so, uh, we have January, we didn't have a permit contract for this, but...
Sorry, what? Others, yeah. Well, I mean, it's, uh, it's good, we're gonna get it down. Once you get it down, everybody's gonna be happy, okay?
The next project is a Northwest Blue Line regrade.
But we need to, but we need to pave it, right? At least halfway, that, that it, that it fulfills.
So we'll come back and, and pave that, and if anything settles, we'll come back and cover, uh, on the drainage projects to revenue the, the payment.
Yeah.
The next project is a Northwest Blue Line regrade. This is just a small portion that hasn't gotten, uh, completed, there was some right-of-way, uh, that needed to be purchased, I think that's already been purchased, so now we'll go back and complete the small portion of regrade on that project that needs to get done.
What are the limits on that one?
Um, it's just north of Trenton, there's just a small little...
Oh, okay, by the King's Fast Loop?
Yeah, there, there was a property that we had bought.
With Lima's property?
So I think now we've already purchased it, so we can...
Oh, we did?
I think that went through, we had a meeting, I know we had a condemnation meeting, so.
Lima's property now?
I'll bring it up through.
Lima's property, yeah?
Uh, by my line.
Okay, thank you.
Northwest Regional Stormwater Detention Facility, this is by the P D. Uh, most of this project has been dug out, but we're going out to bids right now, uh, and then that'll provide relief completely in the Northwest area.
What is gonna be the ultimate depth, depth, uh, in comparison to surface?
I'd have to get that too.
Okay. About, uh, network, something?
So you, you wanna know the depth to the top of the bank?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm asking. It's a lot of storage there.
Well, we'll get it.
Okay.
Primrose and Bicentennial, um, this is a small, uh, localized drainage project near the museum. We'll be working on redesigning, we couldn't get an outfall, uh, through the irrigation and the railroad tracks, so we're looking for, for an outfall, we'll get that completed this year. Pump bypass two fifty-five, it's, it's a bypass, we need a I B W C permit for this, and we'll work to do that permit right now.
Where, where's that?
Um, it's down in the south of, like, uh, Military.
Military and...
East, East of Twenty-third.
East of Twenty-third?
Military, I mean, right through the corner.
Back on Primrose, so the railroad and District Irrigation District Three didn't give you permission, give us, wouldn't let us borrow under?
It's been really difficult to get permits, uh, for, from District Three.
Okay.
All right. Camerades is, is another localized project, uh, small, subject for design, and that, that's the, the total project, the listing of projects that we've been opening up.
Yeah, street improvements, uh, we're down to the last ones, in fact, most of these are about finished, okay?
So street improvement, the, the only project that's, that's probably gonna be left pending, minus punch lists and reimbursements. Uh, the first, one, two, three, four, the first five projects were M P O funded, so those, we, we kind of leave open, because we got to do reimbursements back from Tech Dot. So we're, right now, we're seeking reimbursement for the projects, but if you've driven by tenth, project pretty much buttoned up. Twenty-third and Ebony, Hackberry, Jackson, Kendallwood, um, all those projects are either on substantial completion and punch out. Uh, the last project there, which is funded in three places, Dove, Forty-first to Benson, um, that project is ongoing. We're hopefully looking at, uh, I think it's a January, I believe, if I, if I have the date correct, January of this year as the completion date for that one. And that, that's all of the projects under this system.
Any questions? Next one is Drainage Tree.
So Drainage Tree, this is, uh, we use the Drainage Tree to fund these projects. We previously talked about the Valboa Pump Station, the Valboa Acres Pump Water Infrastructure Pump Station, the one point three plus the seven hundred thousand will make the total project, uh, for that project. Uh, that was being, was designed by Fredis Engineering. We have Valboa Snowskate Improvement, uh, we have some snowskates out there that were damaged during the storms, we're going, uh, replace them and make them new. Dove and Forty-first, this is, uh, the same project we previously talked about, it's funded in three sections. Harvey Stormwater Pump Station Upgrade, uh, this is out at Harvey and Second Street. This is being designed by, uh, Fredis Engineering. We're hoping we'll have the design out by late, uh, late this year, so we can bid that out. McCallen Lateral Channel Improvements, this is up by Wisconsin and Tenth, between Tenth and Second. Uh, Ronnie's doing that, hopefully, we can have that one ready as well. The North, Northeast McCallen Edinburgh Lateral, this runs, uh, south of D H R or on the west side of McCall. We're designing that, uh, we have an associates, and hopefully, we can have that out, we're at about ninety-five percent, we need to buy right-of-way, um, on that project.
Is that just widening?
Well, right now, if you go to Redbud, uh, what would be across the street, south of Violet?
Yeah, south of Violet.
There's some apartments, there's a ditch, that, that does not have an outfall at this side.
Oh.
So what we'd be doing is trying to take that ditch north, either the road, well, right now, we have it as half-open channel, half in boxes to get to the box that's near, uh, a property that D H R had developed.
Right.
And make that outfall connection.
Isn't it, isn't it far right there to the, to the east of it?
From Jackson, um, east is the City of Farce, so it's still within our city limit.
But they don't have any outfalls there?
So you would have to go to the Tech Dot system, so, and then Tech Dot limits you on the amount of, uh, release you can put into the box.
Yeah.
Which wouldn't provide the...
So it doesn't, you can't...
It wouldn't provide relief for that, or the drainage area.
Yeah, that's not a, an alternative.
Not one that would work, no.
Yeah, all right. Because that's, this is expensive.
Yes. Uh, but it's, it's a needed project area. I mean, in all, all the storms that do that, there are people out, they have to pump, manually pump, uh, for a pretty long period, depending on the size of rain. So this will relieve, uh, a lot of resources, it's a much needed project, it's well-funded, uh, yeah.
Robert, you, 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 you looked at the alternative of going with the Minero Uncle with, with Far, and it won't work? Or Tech Dot?
Yeah, I think, so we had the engineers look at that outfall, uh, it just, the size of it is too small. Uh, the next project is Thodos Acres, uh, this is a project right by Solid Works, it's kind of a Colonia. We're doing the last two parcels, and then we can take that project off. The Trade Zone Pump Station...
They didn't get any C D B G, man, they don't?
I don't think, we'll get to see, see, I'll move on to this one. Trade Zone Pump Station Improvement, that one's out to bid, and we'll see where bids coming up.
Will be turf?
Turf two eight?
Stop.
So turf, turf two eight, we have, all these projects, uh, are under design, we've, uh, issued design contracts on them. Uh, the first one's Augusta Avenue Drainage. The, the second one is, uh, Bowie redevelopment, have to, to do the mass grading, um, to fill in Bowie and have it ready for, for whatever's needed. The Country Club Terrace Drainage Improvement, this one as well has been, uh, issued to an engineer, working on a small, uh, design for localized flooding. Uh, Dallas Avenue and First, same thing, it's a localized, uh, flooding issue, and, uh, engineering contracts have been issued for that one. El Rancho Drainage Improvement is currently under design, uh, we're waiting on the...
Is that phase two?
How's that?
El Rancho, is that phase two?
So we have El Rancho Drainage Improvement, which is the, the R D F. And then we have the roadway project, uh, that would extend drainage on the roadway. So they're kind of separated out, they, they don't track on the same timeline. The, the R D, the El Rancho R D F, we're kind of just waiting on, uh, a little bit, we're working with, with Danny to put a park in. And then we can button that project and go out to bids on that one. The roadway is a little more long lead item, takes a lot longer to, to develop. Uh, there's right-of-way to acquire, so that, that's why they're kind of separating out, but... Uh, the subdivision drainage, there's a subdivision, um, near there that's getting tied into that detention pond, that's tracking kind of on the same pace as well, it already has an engineer. Limburg Avenue Drainage Improvement, again, it's kind of in the same area, localized flooding. South McCall Pine Ridge, same thing, it's, it's a localized, uh, flooding. And then we have Yuma Avenue Drainage, Roadway and Drainage Improvement, that's the look to... Right now, Yuma's almost built out, but the engineer's looking at it to finish off what it would take to build that, and how to get that to be structured. This is design money.
Quinta, you just awarded, uh, last week, and then the next one is City Hall Expansion. Uh, I'll remind you that in a workshop we had about a month ago, we, we recommended that we use this money for the, uh, reservoir development. So we're gonna rename this fund, and then we also have to talk about the fact that we have funded the design of City Hall in the Development Corporation. We're gonna recommend that we move forward with that. Uh, I think that by the time that's finished, we, we may be able to figure out how to track both projects. Unless you don't want to do, uh, City Hall, I think we've already determined that we need it, we've got it budgeted, and we should move forward with it. With design only, that's all we have budgeted. And then move this, this money over to have it for the, uh, reservoir development. We're also gonna come to you after we finish the budget and recommend that we move additional money towards that project, but that's a workshop item that we need to still have.
Roy, I'm gonna vocalize this, and I guess I should have said it earlier, but, I don't wanna sound pessimistic?
Okay.
That's a lot of multimillion-dollar projects all at one time, Roy. I mean, I know, like, Ansel Lewis, that's covered, Quinta, most of it's been covered, the Bowie project. I mean, if they were under ten million dollars, like, I, I think I would feel comfortable, but man, that's a lot of expenses. And, 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 and Ansel Lewis is perfect, it's revenue generating, it's gonna pay for itself. But some of the other projects, you know, I still have some reservations, that I don't have that guarantee the way I feel about Ansel Lewis, that's gonna generate revenue the way we expect it to. And then we kind of go back, you know, to the business plan, what we're gonna do with the Bowie, and eventually, you know, Quinta has developed a little bit more on that. And it's just a concern of the, of, of the, the, the revenue sources that we're going to plug into to make all those projects happen. I'm behind all those projects, it's the timing of them. And I know that we, we like to stagger them, right? You know, like, like collective bargaining. We learned our lesson not to put police and park in the same fiscal year, right? And so to me, I, I got a little bit of trepidation to having so many multimillion-dollar projects all going on at the same time. Because we don't know what tomorrow or next year will be.
We get it, um, Ansel Lewis is in our rearview mirror.
Right, I thought, we can knock that out.
That's under construction, it's fully funded, we've got more funding than we need, we're gonna borrow less money than we thought, so we shouldn't be concerned about Ansel Lewis. Quinta, uh, we have it funded, that's a quality of life project. We've never said that that project would pay for itself, it will not. It's purely a quality of life, it will make you revenue, but not to pay for itself.
Right.
We, we made that determination, we decided to move forward.
Right, wait, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, man.
No, you, okay, I, I see the glass half full.
Right.
Okay, we have the resources, we've never been in this position before, as, as far as I know. So if we're gonna take action, we gotta take action when we can, because Commissioner's right, we don't know what's gonna happen in the future. In the future, we may not be able to do it, but we can now, so, I mean, we gotta do what we have to do.
Yeah, and what, and what we've tried to do at the staff level for that project specifically, the reservoir, we have taken very small steps at a time. I think that we probably took the biggest leap, this last one, even though it wasn't a big monetary leap, it's going to, it's going to put us in a, in a place where we will be ready to do that. You still have to take that action. You still have not said we're spending twenty-one million dollars, or any, or anything like that. But you, you funded the next part of the study, the design, some of the design, we're gonna start draining and filling.
Right.
Those have green lights. And so at any time, we, and, and I don't wanna get into the details of the project, because that's confidential, but at any time of that phased approach, we can stop it. And what we've told you is, there's still the opportunity to make revenue, even if you stop it.
Right.
If you stop it at the next phase, you can sell the whole property.
Right.
Walk off and make a lot of money.
We had the discussion that no matter what option or fork in the path you wanna take, that property to be viable, to be sold, has to be prepped.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, and that's, and that's a step that you approve.
The remediation of it basically has to get done.
And in fact, on Monday's agenda, you've got an item to, uh, approve engineering work, to, uh, do the design of that bill, uh, and to move forward. So we're gonna go on a phased approach, we, we're gonna give you a business plan when that engineering study is finished, uh, so that you can decide to move forward. We're gonna recommend it, because we feel very confident about the phasing, but that's up to you.
Very well.
Ansel Lewis cargo, back rearview mirror. And then, parks at FAR Station, uh, by the end of the year, um, we will have the parks facility complete finally. And, uh, moving in, actually, this month, we'll be moving in and then by the end of the year, we'll be in the terminal. That's about a hundred projects, and then, we've got Development Corp to do, we can do that, it's scheduled to be done later, or we could do it today.
All today's are rollovers, right?
Yeah.
And what we've already seen, I think we just go through it today.
Do it today, alright, okay. So, actually, uh, they're all, uh, rollover, other than three, I wanna say?
Let's just go through the new ones.
Yeah, and, and they're not big numbers, the first one is number twenty, which is a AC unit. Three hundred and thirty-one thousand. And then, number thirty-one is the Palm Beach Community Center, same thing, AC unit. And thirty-seven is the repairs on Quinta. This was reviewed by the Development Corporation, uh, a couple of weeks ago and approved as a budget. And they also approved, uh, the agencies. That's probably, I mean, unless you all have any other questions, there's a lot of money in here. We've got thirty, almost thirty-three million dollars to do out of the Development Corp. Um, and then, the Development Corp does fund agencies, do you have any more?
But all of them were reviewed at the...
Right, they were reviewed and approved. And so, we can bring that one, the next meeting, because we don't have it with us, do we? We can bring that one back. We don't, we weren't anticipating doing Development Corp today, but we can do the agencies at the next meeting.
Okay, but that wasn't scheduled for today, was it?
No.
You wanna hold out?
Huh?
You wanna wait till it's scheduled?
Well, yeah. I mean, if it wasn't pegged for today, then let's not get ahead of ourselves.
Yeah, because we don't have it.
Okay.
So, uh, we can bring that back, hopefully it won't take us long. It was pretty consistent to last year's funding. Obviously, the city commission can increase, decrease, add, whatever. Any questions on any of these, there's, uh, forty-four of them.
The after-school learning centers, we do most of them.
That's with the school district, a program that we have, that we do with the school district? Every year.
Together, teachers to stay and...
What do we fund there?
I think, I think that one is the Boys and Girls Club.
Boys and Girls?
Correct. We do that one here as well, I think it's the moving out of the general fund, the two hundred thousand.
That's right. This is the, the general fund is the one that carries the program with the school district.
On the UTRTD Medical School, is this the last year of the million dollars?
You asked me that.
Omar did last time.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll send you that information.
Because I know it's a ten-year agreement.
It's one or two, it's one or two left, I don't think it's a lot.
Because this is the one that says up to two million, right?
Yes. You only did that once.
Right.
Next one, one fifty from here, but don't I recall seeing next month for five hundred somewhere?
No, no, that's five hundred in the, um, convention center. They've got an expense of five hundred and a revenue of five hundred.
Okay. So, we fund one fifty of this five hundred?
Yeah, no, in addition to the five hundred that they have in the, in the convention center, this is another one fifty revenue that we provide, right?
It's part of their five hundred revenue?
No. Additional.
Additional.
I forgot to ask Eduardo, on the, um, Taylor Road between two mile and four mile line?
But the five hundred's...
Are we looking at any participation with Tex-? Because I know they're doing from two miles of business and then from business to...
Yeah.
In the convention center.
We keep it a bit.
It's just right, additional revenue for additional expenses.
Now, that one, no. We have, we have one cost to convention.
Okay.
Uh, we, we went out for Benson and Taylor. Partially funded, I believe it's Benson.
Okay.
What we would do is, once we have it shovel ready?
Yeah. We're gonna be...
To Taylor.
We're gonna break you down for the first time.
Oh, it's all local? But, but Taylor from two mile to, to the expressway, isn't that Tex-? Also participating?
On, from, uh, expressway to two mile, they're contributing on that.
They are, but, but Mission is the, uh, the lead agency on that one.
We've been tracking that project, we've been working with them, or helping them, uh, but they're the lead agency.
Because if we do two to four mile line, well, Mission ends at Nolana and then you jump to Palmhurst as you go up to the road.
Palmhurst is in, is in that, in the small portion.
Yeah, that, that last portion from Nolana to, to three.
There's a portion that's within Palmhurst and then I think...
Oh, no, I'm, I'm sorry. Palmhurst is from Nolana, all the way, just a little bit past or right where, um, Sherland North Junior High is on Taylor. And that's where their city limit ends and then it becomes ETJ.
It's part of the county.
Yeah, it's part of the county. But right now, we don't, do we, can we expect or are we looking at?
For...
For participation from Tex- or, or it's unlikely?
We can always do that, um, it just will track longer.
Oh, I see.
We'll be looking at doing the environmental, um, so if that's a route we wanna go, then it'll, it'll track a little bit.
Longer, okay.
And I'll, and I'll double check whether it was Benson or Taylor that has federal funds. One of those projects has federal funds.
Okay.
The one that does, we'll be going back to seek, uh, co-funding on the day, but I think it's on Benson.
Because I'm already getting calls from people who live off Taylor? They don't want it. I'm for it, but they don't want it. But, that's just, you know, that's a product of progress and growth.
A better, a better thoroughfare.
Yeah.
We should keep... That's what I'm gonna recommend.
Yeah, there, at one point it was opposition, I think that probably hit off at two.
At two mile, right?
With Mission.
Right.
Because there was some opposition.
Team of twenty-one.
We brought it back, but I funded it.
Oh, we set up the two move.
Yeah, I, I know what you're talking about.
Thank you.
No one here, yeah. This is the last year of the MOU.
Right, of the MOU, right.
Now, we've got it here, the agencies, we can make copies if you wanna do it. It's up to you all, Mayor, what do you want to do?
Up to you. Let's go out, thirty-something minutes.
Alright, okay. We'll take a little break.
So, we're gonna do the agencies?
If you, if you allow her to make some copies?
Sure, of course. I don't know, don't we normally have some to come by, or no?
We didn't last year. They go to, uh...
Oh, because of the Benny process, sorry. They haven't already done their presentation?
And Development Corp.
And the one.
So, Benson, Benson's the one that has the federal fund.
I know, man.
Benson has the federal fund.
The federal fund.
He has the local fund.
Okay, I mean, to me, in a timeline, our, our city is growing from center out west, so you would wanna develop and approve Benson first and then Taylor, right? Because there's less traffic from Taylor than there is from Benson, because that's where our city's moving out. So, Taylor's something, then Benson, then... To me, it's like, you wanna develop Benson first all the way to...
Now, we have that, we have Taylor.
I know who hits it the most then.
Oh, yeah.
Benson, like, say.
The one with the ten years?
Oh, yeah. Oh, we're supposed to go through today, I don't have it.
Yeah, this one.
I can make a copy of that.
Sure.
But you don't have been the same all this time, yeah.
Yes, there's a lot of...
Okay. So, uh, because we went to do all this work and if we can finish these, we can cut one meeting out of this week.
Right.
Yeah, I like that, so...
Okay, let's go.
It's so that you can't see, I'm gonna tell you what it says. So, uh, you've got one sheet that's got two groups of agencies, right? One is from the general fund, but we traditionally have funded out of, out of the, out of all taxes. And the other is from the Development Corp. So, on the first one, I know that the CDBG board also reviews these. And, um, you've got the recommendation as well as mine. Mine are consistent with CDBG, uh, except for three items that I would like for you to reconsider. Uh, and that is the Valley Symphony Orchestra, you know, we just had that event here recently. But the truth is that they have a choice of where to go, right? I mean, we have the best building, they know it, we know it, but they still have a choice. And, you know, at, at one time, several years back, we were actually competing with Edinburgh UTRTD where they were gonna play, they may have used it as a foil, I don't know. But, from the city manager's perspective, we need VSO at the performance outside. And so, they requested a hundred and twenty-five, the CDBG board recommended eighty-four. I'm recommending we go to at least a hundred. The second one that I'd like to, uh...
First of all, do we get an objection from Quakin on that one?
I think that...
He wants more.
I think...
Well, I, I'm looking at the actuals that Roy was very kind to provide us for the last ten years. In thirteen...
That's this one right here.
Right, just the one with the small print. In two thousand thirteen, fourteen, it was one oh one. In two thousand fifteen, sixteen, it was one twenty-five. Seventeen and eighteen, it went down to one twenty, and, and sorry, and twenty, it went down to one twenty. And twenty-one it dropped to eighty-four. So, I'd like to see if we can start going, kind of back up.
I agree with you.
Uh, maybe one twenty?
Well, I'm, yeah, one twenty or one twenty-five what they're requesting. Now, what they tell me is that they're actually paying for the facility when they use it. So, we're getting some of it back, which is, that I hear in the tune of around sixty, sixty-two thousand or sixty-four thousand a year.
I don't know what the number is, Tony, but yes.
That's what I hear. So, some of that, this money, you know, comes back to us, so... Their, their request was one twenty-five and I think that it's extremely important.
I agree with you.
Like we stated, Roy, as the city goes, so do the arts.
Yes, so do the arts.
One twenty-five it is, so.
Very good. So, the next one, McAllen Town Band, they're just, they're just requesting nineteen, the difference is four.
McAllen Town Band, yes.
Can we ask for nineteen? Recommend nineteen?
Four thousand more, yes.
Nineteen, so.
Excellent. And then, the last one. Hold on.
Can we go to IMAS?
IMAS is the next one, sorry.
Uh, IMAS, um, they actually sent you all a presentation, I think that they met with some, I asked them to go meet with you. They've got a really good story to tell, not only where they are now, but where they're, where you think they're gonna be. And, uh, you know, I've always treated IMAS as, as us, and one of our departments. Their payroll, as everyone else's, continues to go up and we've been pretty flat, right? As, as far as what we, um, fund done, so I would suggest we get closer to their request.
I think we do their request.
Yeah, let's do their request, yeah.
Oh.
And I'll do the request of, uh, McAllen, how do you do?
The same.
The same.
These are all McAllen, one twenty-five.
Where, it's not that much for them.
Yeah.
That was easy.
Okay.
See department, hey, you ought to have asked for more.
Look at all this money.
Uh, Development Corporation...
Okay, that's right.
Oh, you, you got a question?
No, that was it, you were going right into it.
Yeah, Development Corporation, I would highlight STC, just because I, my recommendation is lower, but the Development Corp actually recommended four fifty. Uh, the request was five hundred, I don't have any problem with that. I don't have any problem with that. And then the other was the Boys and Girls Club. Otherwise, I would, I would recommend everything that Development Corporation approved.
On lift fund, I seem to recall a conversation over the last seven years, their involvement with the community, the amount of lending that they actually do for the micro or small businesses. But more importantly, I remember that former Mayor Jim Darlene says, why don't we have a representation on that board? And I think that's been one of the sectors that we've had for, for some period of time. And I'm going to assume, hopefully wrong, that we still don't have someone on it?
No, we don't. We don't, Commissioner, and that, it became a big deal several years ago. From our perspective, they have an office here. They've had an office here for a long, long time. And not having a representative, I think that's what you are. You have a lot of leverage of what goes on there. And their program is really, really needed. If, if these folks don't help these companies, these companies will not get help.
Because we kind of punished them in 2020 and, well, 21 and 22, because we only funded 32,000 and 85,000. Unless there was something extraneous to that recommendation.
Well, I think that was, it wouldn't fund, we only fund what they, that they give out.
Maybe that was... Because the money was going out. That was it.
And, and, okay, and those are, those are the start of COVID.
Yeah.
Right.
So they weren't, they weren't engaging with companies.
Well, there wasn't, there wasn't that much, whatever, ask. But, but they will, we, we put up to 200,000, but if they don't, they don't fund it.
Oh, I see what you mean.
That's right. It's whatever they use.
Right, whatever they use, okay. All right. So do we go with the city manager's recommendation on the...
Slap text problem?
We go with the Development Corp.
Yeah, I think, stick with the Development Corp.
The Development.
Okay, 50?
That was a big discussion, yeah.
All right. So we'll bring it this way to the final budget.
You may be a very happy person.
Oh, good.
We all know it's about my happiness.
To be it or not. Okay, and we're done.
All right.
You got it? It's going to be...
City Hall Orchestra project. It'll be like $21 million.